Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Pennfield's website, which is www.pennfield.org, also on the Town of Pennfield's Government Access Channel 1303, and on streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and it is free. If anyone would like to address the board on any public hearing matter tonight, there will be specific public participation opportunities for each matter after the board responds to the applicant's presentation with its own questions and concerns. Anyone that's viewing the meeting remotely and wishes to address the board can do so either by calling in with a comment or question at 340-8771, or by submitting a comment or question electronically, again through the website pennfield.org. We're going to start tonight with a work session, handle some tabled matters and some other routine matters. After that, we will call the new applications up, Andy will read the application and ask the applicant to come up to one of these tables and give us a name and address. And then what we have been doing, and we think it works well, is the board member that's assigned to the particular application will walk the applicant through it. All applicants have submitted written applications, they're very thorough and detailed, we've gone over all of them, and we certainly appreciate that effort. We don't do this to try to stifle anything anybody wants to say. Of course, you can let the board know anything you think is relevant on the application, but we just think it makes the process a little more efficient. We do have a fairly lengthy agenda tonight. We also like to point out every meeting that we think the town does a really good job of advertising the agenda so that people know that if they want to comment on an application, they can do so, either by coming in here, or as we talked about earlier, through the phone, or the website. The town does this by requiring applicants to put up signs. Most of you have done that, put up the signs, so people driving by, they can call and ask what's happening with that property. The town advertises the agenda on its website, and a lot of the details of the application can be found there as well. The town sends postcards, maybe you've received those in the past, to homeowners and property owners that have property near the application site. All these things are done so that if people want to come and ask questions or present their comments to the board, they're more fully informed of their right to do that. We think it works well. In that being said, I would ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Let's go right to the approval of minutes from the May meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted, and a second by George.
She had to grab a new cord.
Okay.
I'll take some notes.
You're gonna remind her?
I'll take some notes.
I think it's gonna pass, this is just a guess, but I think it's gonna pass. All right. Motion to approve the minutes, and a second, all those in favor. All right. Okay. Tabled applications, we have three of them. Are we gonna have an appearance on the first tabled application?
No.
Okay. So, that is 1676 Pennfield Road, the Flower City Arcade. It's kind of a neat application that we have, but there's some complications, and some things still need to be worked out, but they're progressing, and it's also being heard by the planning board, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Given all that, it's wise for us to continue tabling this, so may I have a motion in that regard?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
The second tabled application is Alden Glen Drive. Anybody here on that? Come on up. I know we have some new things on that.
We do, indeed.
Okay. Were you lead on it, George?
I was.
Yeah. Hi, how you doing?
How's it going?
Pretty good. You wanna summarize, George, or Andy?
Well, why don't I have him state his name and address for the record?
Yeah, good idea.
Mike Stagnita, to Alden Glen Drive. How you guys doing, again?
Nice to see ya.
See, that's why I didn't ask for your name, because I remembered you from last month. But he's, you know, a stickler.
Yeah.
Okay.
Andy, anything you wanted to summarize before we start?
So, the board tabled it at the last meeting, and requested that the applicant provide some additional information, which he has. He's reducing the size of the building and the porches to eliminate one of the variances that he needs. Still needs variances for the square footage and for the height, and that's it.
Great. Yeah, so I appreciate the revised letter that was very detailed, so it allowed me to kind of go through. Two questions, I see that you did reduce the pitch of the roof and the height of the walls in an effort to reduce the overall kind of visual footprint, but the height remained the same. Can you walk me through the need for that additional height?
So, I needed to, I reduced the sidewalls, but in order to have that loft eventually, I needed the pitch to change. So, I was gonna do scissor truss, and it still kept the building at about 25 feet, but I reduced the sidewalls by two feet, so...
Gotcha. But there's no way for you to be able, so in other words, you need the additional height to get the loft. What are you gonna use the loft for?
Just extra storage, place for the kids to hang out eventually, so...
Yeah, just cautionary note, if you're using that for living space, that is outside the jurisprudence of a storage shed, so...
Correct. So, storage mostly, so be using it for extra storage.
Gotcha. And I see you're maintaining the shrubbery, as you had indicated there were, there was a feedback from the neighbor in regards to agreement, and I don't have any additional questions, because everything that we had requested, other than the height, is clearly delineated in the letter that you said you were going to do, so defer to the rest of the board for questions.
Any other questions? No? Okay. I think we're ready to move forward then.
Start with seeker?
Yep.
Yeah, so in regards to seeker, I'd say this is a type 2, requiring no additional action?
I'll second.
All right. We have a seeker motion to declare it a type 2 by George, second by Andres. Got it? Very good. Okay. Any further discussion on the seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the merits?
So, after our last discussion, the applicant has reduced the overall square footage, and reoriented the building, and also made an effort to work with the neighbor so that it would be more closely blending in with the neighborhood, as well as, you know, I guess the only challenge here is this is self-created, but in this case, he does need it for the storage, so based on the fact that he has met the, most of the requirements that we did ask him to do, I would recommend approval.
Aye. Second.
Whoa, jump the gun a little bit. That's all right. Okay, so...
We know how she's gonna vote.
Yeah.
Must have to be somewhere, yeah? We have a motion to approve by George, and I believe it's technically was a second by law, so for the reasons stated by George. Any further discussion?
No.
No? All right. All those in favor? Okay, good luck.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for getting that stuff, that was helpful.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Mm-hmm. Let's see. So, then Hampstead, the second table that we're gonna hear tonight.
Aye.
That's what I get for seconding somebody. I never do. I thought I'd help him out.
Hello?
Hello. Do you guys want us to introduce ourselves again?
Yes, please.
Ina, Larry, we're at 60 Hampstead Drive in Webster. Yeah, we're asking for the variances we need for our project.
So, Andy, anything you wanted to summarize first?
Again, the board tabled this at the last meeting. The, let's see here. So, the applicants, they did reduce the size of the building, so that reduces the variance request for the size. Still looking for the setback variance from the rear property line, that's the same, and they also indicated they're willing to reduce the height of the building to 25 feet, reducing that variance request.
Yeah, correct. So, first, and I also noted that you did get an opportunity to speak to your neighbors, and there was a letter that indicated you had spoken to them with their signatures. Were you able to get ahold of the one neighbor that had kind of expressed some concerns?
No, I actually emailed, texted, stopped by multiple times. I know it said in the email he wanted to remain anonymous, so it's possible he doesn't want to talk to us. I don't know what else to do. I've done whatever we could on our part.
I would say that the applicant has done their due diligence in this case to contact the neighbor to get additional feedback or to talk through the concerns. Appreciate the fact that you were able to do the adjustments that we spoke last time that was, those were fair compromises. I did have one question on, with the reduced size and the setback, is there any chance that you could move it a little farther away from the property line in order to be able to maybe mitigate one of the variances?
We want to keep it as back, as far back as we can. It'll make it smaller, and...
Yep, understood, but just, obviously, you know, the goal here is to reduce the number of variances if at all possible, so that was just one question I had, it was possible to move it forward just enough to eliminate one of the variances. I think it would be, what would be, Andy, 11 feet?
Yeah, 11 and 1/2 feet.
Yeah, 11 and 1/2 feet. If you could move it forward, that would eliminate one of the variances for us, and then that, I think that would put us in a good solid position.
Just, and I'm not very good at knowing this stuff, but didn't your yard slope, is this the one where the yard sloped, and so actually having it back a little bit further and closer to that?
Kept it more out of sight.
Kept it a little bit more so that the height wasn't as significant?
Yeah, you're talking about the overall pitch of the property, the elevation of the property would allow that to be a little bit lower view from the road.
And then like behind that, there's no neighbors behind there. I guess I'm saying I'm not terribly concerned with it being where it is personally, but...
Like I said, as we go through these, I'm always looking for ways to reduce the variances wherever possible, so...
It'll be better if it's pushed back, it'll be more out of sight, and the building would look smaller.
And also, the only way I think you can get it, if you go back to that last view that Andy had up with the map, there's a conservation easement that follows right along the edge, so it's right at the corner of that, so if you move it farther away, you're pulling it forward as well.
Yeah, I'm talking about pulling the building forward, not into the easement, but forward, so the driveway would...
It would be closer to the circle out front, to the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, but still would be within, that's not one of the variances that's impacted. It's used on the side and the back, but in either case, it was just something that I looked at when I saw the drawing and thought that was something that could be done. But in either case, at this point, I don't have any additional questions. Anybody else on the board?
Any other questions from the board? I just would note, you folks have been there probably four times, and actually, originally, the board denied your request. You went back to the drawing board, so to speak, had more contact with some of the neighbors. I think George said you did due diligence, and you've made it, in our opinion, I think, a much better plan. You know, you had some of the comments that you were aware, they weren't really related to the project. You guys had the unfortunate fire, you know, and it's still kind of taking you a while to rebound from that, but, you know, the kids in the ATVs, be careful with that stuff, because nobody wants anybody to get hurt. But thank you for your efforts on this, I think that's kind of the way things are supposed to work, and we appreciate that. Yep.
Well, in deference to the fact that Laura did point out the elevation as a reminder, thank you for that, I think we can move forward.
Okay.
So, in reference to seeker, I would say it's a type 2, doesn't require any additional action at this time?
I'll second.
All right. We have a seeker motion by George to declare it a type 2, second by Andres, all those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits?
So, you know, with some diligence on the part of the applicant, back and forth to help reduce some of the additional needs for the variances, and the fact that they, you know, they do have a large family, obviously, they brought one of the family members with them, so we had an extra applicant, I don't know if anybody else noticed.
Well, they didn't put their name on the record.
Oh, that's true, you didn't. And so, you know, with that being said, and their willingness to work with us, although it is a bit larger than we would normally have for a neighborhood of that type, I think that in this case, I would recommend approval based on your willingness to work together and the need for the storage, with ensuring that you do, we do abide by the things that we've agreed to as far as the alterations to the plans.
I'll second.
All right. A motion to approve by George, a second by Matt. Any further discussion?
I think we also want to make sure we note that, you know, the topography of the land kept us the most out of sight, it's the farthest back that it could possibly go, that, you know, they're making an attempt to keep it out of sight and, you know, a low visual impact.
Right. And look at the map, you know, it's hampered by a conservation easement, as you've already pointed out, it's a, I don't know geometry all that well, I guess it's a triangle, but...
Yeah, it's pretty good.
You know, could be a trapezoid, depending on where it ends, but...
I believe that's a rhombus.
A rhombus? Okay. In any event, all those factors, I think, weigh in favor of approving it as well. So, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay. I think we're ready to get into the new applications, so let's start with number one.
Jeremy and Elizabeth Kalpin, 43 Kings Mill Court, Pennfield, New York, 14526. Request approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a shed with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 43 Kings Mill Court. The property is currently or formerly owned by Jeremy and Elizabeth Kalpin, and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 094.18-1-45. This is application number 23Z-0039.
Hello.
How are ya? Hiya.
Jeremy Kalpin, 43 Kings Mill Court.
So much fun, you wanted to come back again.
That's right.
Two months in a row. So, it looks like last month, we approved a variance for the shed, and come to find out that the retaining wall in the pool is just a little bit farther back than the end you thought, and it's kind of forcing you to have to place the shed back a little bit farther. That's pretty much summarizes it?
Correct.
That we're going from five foot to an eight foot variance, so I think that's what it was.
It's 10 foot off the one side?
Yep.
And then two foot?
I think the change went from it was a five foot, and now we're looking for eight foot for the difference between from last month to this month? Is that correct?
For the variance.
For the variance, sorry, yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yes. In a sense, you know, this is, you know, so minimal, I don't have any other questions for that one.
Nope.
Nope. I guess the only comment I'd make is let's, if it suffices, all the documents and minutes from last month will make a part of the record for this one as well. Okay, does it...
I would note that, I'm presuming, although I don't want to say that, this will be approved, and if they came before us with this variance the last time, I probably would have voted to approve it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. All right. I don't see any phone call-ins on this, I don't think there were any last month, I don't see any electronics submissions. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, then let's proceed with the seeker.
Okay, I move this to type 2 action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
All right. Andres with the seeker, and Matt, any further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I will move to approve the variance, just, you know, covering basically everything we had last month, you know, there were no undesirable changes found, you know, while it could have been, you know, a benefit saw otherwise, the amount that they were looking for was not very much, they weren't aware that this would have been at this point, or else we would have heard it last month, and I don't think anything changes in terms of the standards that we looked at from this month to last month, when we heard the application, so I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve, Andres, second George, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No offense, but hopefully we won't see you next month.
Thank you so much.
All right. All right. We have a special request to call one out of order, so we're gonna do that. I think we're gonna skip to number seven, is that correct?
Yes.
Let's do that, please.
Dustin Mandell, 10 Heather Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a shed with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code, and an existing concrete slab with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 10 Heather Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Sri Kripa, I'm sorry.
You're doing great, Sri Kripa Karthik.
And Dustin Mandell, and is owned R-1-15, SBL number 138.08-1-14. This is application number 23Z-0037.
All right. If we may have your names and addresses for the record, and then let's see, George will walk you through this.
Okay. I'm Sri Kripa Karthik, at 10 Heather Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625.
And I'm Dustin Mandell, from 10 Heather Drive, 14625.
Okay.
Great. All right. Well, first off, thank you for the application, it completes nice, so we got all the details when we're looking at it. So, as I read through it, it appears that you are looking to put a shed on an existing concrete slab, that when you began the process, it was ascertained that the slab itself was not in compliance. So, basically, you'd like to reuse the slab and build on there versus having to build someplace else and have a slab you can't use.
Exactly.
Gotcha. So, yeah, I don't really have a ton of questions, it makes sense that you'd want to reuse the slab, the variance isn't that large, so I guess my only question would be, is you are putting the size shed on here, I just want to make sure, because the letter has corrections on it, Andy, can you just verify the variances?
Yes, so we need a variance of seven feet from the 10-foot rear setback for the slab, and then a three-foot variance from the 10-foot rear setback for the shed.
Gotcha. Okay. Because they were a little different in the letters, okay, great. I don't have any additional questions, if anybody else does?
Anybody else on the board have questions?
No.
Okay. Hopping around here, I don't see anybody on the phone with a comment or question, nor do I see anybody submitting electronic. Okay. Anybody in the audience care to speak about this application? All right. Let's proceed with the environmental.
So, pursuant to seeker, I would say this is a type 2, requiring no additional review.
I'll second.
All right. George and Andres, any further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Andy, thank you so much.
Well, that was just the environmental law of New York State, a little minor...
I jumped the boat, I'm so sorry.
So, on the merits, the, this is, in this case, this isn't even self-inflicted, because they inherited this in the property when they bought it, but...
The shed.
The shed, yep. So, the shed is, the slab is not. So, the variance is not very large, it does allow them to reuse the slab that's already there, which makes sense, and so regarding that, and the fact that everything else is in compliance size of the shed, I would recommend approval.
I'll second.
Okay. So, a motion to approve, George, and a second, you got it? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I can thank you now? Thank you all. Thank you, Andy.
All right. Take care. And thank you, everybody, for allowing us to move that up. Okay, next application, please.
Jared and Michelle McNutt, 1740 Sweets Corners Road, Fairport, New York, 14450. Request approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a second accessory storage building, whereas a maximum of one accessory storage building is allowed under Section 250-5.1-D4 of the code at 1740 Sweets Corners Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Jared and Michelle McNutt, and is owned RA-2, SBL number 126.01-1-15.3. This is application number 23Z-0032.
Okay, we may have your name and address, please.
Michelle McNutt, 1740 Suites Corners Road, Fairport.
Hi, Michelle, how are you?
I'm good.
Thanks for submitting your application, really detailed letter that went along with it, that kind of explained that this is really needed to store some additional equipment on the property. Any other commentary to that? What specifically you'd be looking to store in this second building?
Yes, so our property is five and a half acres, as you can see. We have a tractor and a lawn mower, and multiple implements for that tractor, including things like a rototiller, a snow blower, a mowing deck, a bucket, a forklift, a brush hog, you name it. My husband has a toy for his tractor, as well as yard equipment. We have a pool, and we have ATVs, and dirt bikes, and kids' bikes, and just. And we use the existing barn in the winter to park two of our three vehicles. And so that, with all of the yard stuff, it is impossible to move in there. You can barely get out of the vehicles to park inside. So, we plan to use a new building to store all of the yard stuff, so that we can use the existing building for mainly pool and the vehicles.
Okay. And you'd mentioned in your letter that really just adding on or doing in addition to the current pole barn isn't really feasible from an economic standpoint, that it would just be too costly to tie the roof in, and so that's really not something that would work. As far as the character, talk a little bit about the materials that you were planning on using for the second pole barn? Is that what we're going to call this, or a shed? What are we?
Accessory building.
We'll call it accessory building.
Yeah, so the materials, we're going to have it match the existing barn, because it's going to be right next door. So, red metal siding with gray metal roof, and windows with white frame around the outside. So, it's going to look very, it's going to look like the little sister for the barn that we currently have.
Okay. And then you also described that there are several other properties in the area that also appear to have two buildings. I think we did some research on it. I couldn't, we didn't find any of those necessarily approved, but maybe those were pre-existing.
They might have been.
But nonetheless, it kind of keeps within the character of the neighborhood, that this wouldn't be the only property that would have kind of two accessory buildings on it.
Correct.
Have you spoken to any of the neighbors? Have you had any feedback from them? Do they know you're looking to do this? Was there any support or not support for this?
We have spoken to our two immediate neighbors to the west and to the east, and they, neither of them have any issues. They're both very supportive of it, and can understand why we would need more storage.
I didn't have any other questions, did you guys?
Before I ask other board members, though, I just really haven't reminded folks at home, if they want to call with a comment or question, they can do so by dialing or pushing 3408771. Who here remembers dial phones? Anybody got a handful? Okay, good. Look, the voice scout raises his hand, come on. Or submit a comment electronically at the Penfield.org website. I don't see any comments on either of these. So, I'll open it up to the board. Anyone have any further questions?
I just want to ask, is this proposed barn going to be in line, I guess in a sense, so from the road, if you're facing it, you wouldn't necessarily see the second one, because it would be shielded from the one in front?
That's correct. The front of the building will be in line. It's actually going to be not quite as deep, so yeah, that's the anticipation.
So visually, driving by, you wouldn't necessarily see it unless you're at a sharp angle from the sides?
Correct.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right. Let's move forward with the environmental.
I would suggest this is a type two action, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
All right. Laura and Andres, any further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the merits?
I would move to approve, based on, it's really in a rural area of Penfield. It's very consistent with the other homes in the area. As Andres pointed out, it is visually going to not be kind of separate from what's already there. It's going to be within the character of what already exists on the property. There's obvious, a clear need, while self-created, you've described enough of what that need is.
I'll second.
All right. A motion to approve, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
All right, moving right along.
Timothy and Elizabeth Mulroy, 1194 Shoe Craft Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Request approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building that is taller than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12C of the code, with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1194 Shoe Craft Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Timothy and Elizabeth Mulroy, and is owned RR-1. SBL number 094.02-1-1.5. This is application number 23Z-0033.
All right, maybe we have your names and address, please.
Hi, Elizabeth and Timothy Mulroy, 1194 Shoe Craft Road.
Good evening.
Hi.
Okay, so you're looking for two variances, one for the height of the structure, and the other for the setback. You're looking to store RVs, farm equipment, and other toys, it sounds like, in there? And it sits on 11 acres of land, about approximately, right?
Correct.
So, whenever I see setback issues, and I see 11 acres of land, the first question that comes to my head is, why do you need that 27 feet that you're looking to get a variance for?
So, the 27 feet basically just follows the driveway up. So, we're kind of up on a hill, so we'll come up on a hill, the grade will go back down, and then we'll continue that driveway into the, into the new storage barn.
Okay, so could you put it 50 feet from your side?
We, unfortunately, we have a pond in the front, so we have all runoff and drainage pipes going through that area. So, we have drains, because this gets a little bit wet in the wintertime and the spring, so we have drains going into the pond. So, as you get closer to that, there's more interference.
So, with the survey map that's up right now, it shows a picture, or a drawing of where the barn's going to be. Where in relation to that barn on that survey map are the pipes?
So, the pond is in the front on the bottom, so obviously, the driveway's up on the top there. So, you're going to go all the way up, and yeah, right above or below 748.62 would be where the barn is.
Yep.
The drainage begins, there's a drain probably 200 feet, probably right where you are. There's a drain there, and there's lines that run there. So, if you begin to come out, you start interfering with the drainage pipes there, and then also other lines.
So, if you were to put that barn 50 feet from your property line, would it interfere with the pipes?
It would, A, it could interfere with the pipes, but it also would be, we would then have to, I mean, the driveway would not then connect to the barn. We'd have to almost loop it. So, we're trying to just to make it the most direct route from interfering with everything else.
Okay.
Just trying to keep it out of the middle of the backyard, too. You know, just the way the house is set over to the side there. I mean, the patio, I mean, that's where we are, and then you'd have the barn right there, so.
Okay. So, then let's talk about the height. It is, the building height is 31 feet 8 inches, but four of those feet is, I could never say this word, a cupola?
I don't know.
That works.
Cupola, I don't know.
Sure. So, the main building portion is 27 feet 8 inches, where 20, 20, right?
20 feet is the maximum.
Is a maximum. So, why do you need that extra 7 feet 8 inches?
Our objective was to not make the barn huge, just based on the size of our lot, not make it 60 feet.
You're talking about the footprint, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we thought, you know, going up a little bit more to give us that loft for storage, just based on, like we said, we don't, we're trying to keep it out of the middle of the yard, and not take up too much space, so putting the storage up top made more sense for us.
And with the cupola or cupola, we don't want it to look like just a standard, but we want it to complement our house, and we want it to complement the neighborhood. So, it's going to match our house, the doors are going to match, and we just thought the cupola would just add a little bit more feature of, more of a.
I'm going to be honest, I personally am not concerned about the four feet of the cupola. I'm more concerned about the 7 feet 8 inches.
So, right now, I have a tractor, I have an RTV, I have a zero-turn, I have a flail mower, I have a work truck, I have my personal truck, we have a two-car garage. The tractor and both my trucks are sitting outside. I mean, our driveway's about 300 feet. You really can't see it from the road, but when you drive up, we don't want to store, you know, expensive equipment outside, when we can have it inside. And the upstairs would be a storage for Beth can keep her car inside in the wintertime, and we can have the RTV accessible to plow the driveway in the wintertime.
You're going to store your car in the second floor?
Oh, in the second floor would be the storage that is in the garage right now.
Gotcha, okay. How much bigger of a footprint would you need?
To bring that roof down?
To bring that roof down, yeah.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
How many square feet of the loft is the loft?
The loft is going to be, well, the barn is.
The length of the whole building.
The length of the building is 36 by 48. So, it's going to be the length, obviously, of the building, and then comes down.
So, probably shave five feet off either side of it?
Correct.
So, I guess that would answer the question, how many square feet they would need, is it 48 by what?
It won't be 100%, you know, usable. You're going to have the arch that comes down, but you'll have that main storage area in the middle of the loft area.
Trying to do math in my head. Yeah, I was going to say, because basically, you could extend the back of the building, right? So, it really wouldn't change the view, and it would give them the storage, and they could lower the. Do you understand what we're saying? So, make the building, yeah. Andy, is there anything in code, if they were to expand the footprint of this and lower the height, is there anything in the code that they would need a variance for at that point?
Well, they would need a bigger building.
I understand, so.
Which would be a bigger, larger variance, yeah.
So, they would, they would need, yeah. But I'm talking about from the size of the structure itself.
Not good. I'm not sure what you're asking, I'm sorry.
How much, what's, how large of a structure, based on the acreage they have, can they put today?
Besides with their actual house.
Yeah, so right now, they're looking for, at a 1,728-square-foot building.
And it's 11 acres, right?
And it's 11 acres.
So, that's 4,790 some feet, I think, is what you could do with that.
That's 1%, right?
So, since you don't need a, you wouldn't need the area.
They wouldn't need a variance to make the building larger, and, yeah.
Yeah, if they could keep it under that 1%, then they wouldn't need it.
And also, to be honest, when we bought the house, we were unaware of a cell tower going in, so we're also kind of just trying to block that from our view as well, a little bit.
I appreciate the honesty, that's.
Yeah, there's a cell tower sitting in the back, and we were, we bought the house, it wasn't there, and about a week after we closed, it started going up. So, we're just trying to get, just kind of sites for sore eyes.
Where's the cell tower?
What's that?
Where's the cell tower?
Right there.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
So, we're trying to.
You know, and the roof being, you know, it's a, I don't know, it's a higher pitch, you know, to match the house. I guess we're trying with the aesthetics of, my whole thing is when he wanted the barn, and I don't want an industrial, you know, barn that just looks like you're driving down, you know, a road in somewhere that's more industrial. I wanted something that matches the house, and that kind of has some aesthetic to it.
And how tall is your house?
Two stories. I don't know how.
Yeah, I don't know exactly.
Will this be in line with the roof of your house?
It's very similar, yeah.
That's our neighbors, so our house.
Yeah, Google Maps put them.
It's wrong, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's interesting, right?
No.
I've noticed that.
It's off by one.
Yeah, so again, when you come up, the first thing you see is?
In the way, I mean, I think we mentioned it, we're set way back, and there's a little bit of an incline when you're pulling up the driveway. And then, once you kind of get where the house is up on a hill, and then it's going to go down a little bit. So, what you're going to see from the road, you won't see the whole thing.
So, from the road, will it look like your house sits higher than?
Yes.
It is, yeah.
Because again, the grade goes, you come up, and then the grade goes back down again.
Basically, the highest point is where the driveway ends right now.
Yes, it goes down afterwards, yes.
Yeah.
Are you going to have electric and water, or?
Yes.
All utilities?
Electric and water, for sure, yeah.
Okay.
And as you can see, there's large pines, but if you vary off to the north, you'll see.
There's, yeah, trees on both sides. You know, where we're located, we're in a section of like five or six properties. They're all 10, 11 acres, you know, with.
There's a horse farm next to us.
Accessory buildings, so.
And your neighbor immediately, that would be most affected by this?
Yes.
Sending a letter of support for the application.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions. And one on the building materials, I don't know if you asked or not, if you would be matching the building materials. No, you said the doors would match, but will the exterior?
It'll, it'll be metal, but yeah, the color scheme is all, are all matching to complement the house.
Yes, exactly. We brought a piece of siding when we met with the builder to make sure that everything was as close as possible.
And then we went with the red. The house right now doesn't have red shutters or cranberry, but we're going to swap the red onto our house to match that, and then we'll go through that.
The Gibsons, is that your neighbor?
Yeah, Tom.
And they're to the north?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. Any other questions from the board? I don't see any phone calls or electronic submissions. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, let's proceed with consideration then.
For seeker, I would make a motion to declare this a type two action, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Matt, second by Andres, type two. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits?
So, I'm going to make a motion to approve both variances for the height and the setback. This is an 11-acre lot, it's, so it's unique in that way. With the height, it's going to sit down and not look any taller than the house itself. I frankly like the cupola. I think it looks good. And frankly, I'm not even considering that part in, for my own personal, in my own personal opinion, a part of the height of the structure itself, because it's really just decorative. The neighbor, most affected by this, supports the application. I'm sure that that person would prefer seeing tractors and things inside rather than outside for storage. It's self-created, but I don't disagree with this application, so I'll make a motion to approve both variances.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to approve both by Matt, second by Andres. Any further discussion?
I'd like to note, you know, the topography of this, while the driveway goes up and it's a high point, the accessory structure's going to be to the back of that, so it's going to be kind of, as the hill goes down, it's going to be out of sight, and the, you know, and the, if you look at the property, they have a lot of trees around it, it's actually going to shield most of this from sight.
And I certainly understand the cell phone issue, or the cell tower issue.
Yeah. Yeah, and, well, I don't know, 40 minutes ago, we approved one.
Not much.
25 feet in a cul-de-sac area, so, yeah, this is, this is good. So, we have a motion to approve, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Holy Foods LLC, Donut Chew, 1 Woodbury Boulevard, Apartment 205, Rochester, New York, 14604. Requests approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.7-C1A of the code to allow the operation of a restaurant at 1900 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by DeMarco Baytown Associates LLC, and is owned GB. SBL number 093.02-1-23.111. This is application number 23Z-0034.
Hello, folks.
Good evening.
If you could just give us your names and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Michael Blair, and the address is 1 Woodbury Boulevard, Apartment 205, Rochester, New York, 14604.
My name is Rachel Nguyen. Address is 10 Thelows Road, Penfield, New York, 14526.
Great, thank you. Andy, can we just pull up the aerial?
Sure.
So, you're proposing a, oh, I guess, a restaurant, a bakery and a bubble tea restaurant to go in Baytown Plaza?
Correct.
That's correct, yes.
So, plenty of parking, plenty of ingress egress, all that stuff.
Correct.
Can you, can you just kind of go through your hours of operation, proposed, how many employees you're going to have, whether you're going to have any music, lighting, that sort of thing?
Sure. So, from what I understand, is that Baytown has a 24-hour of operating hours, but however, we are looking to open up in the mornings of, partially, we'll be taking several hours to prep for the day, which typically, depending on the amount of business we, and traffic, we're thinking about any from, anytime from 7 o'clock in the morning, or 6:30 in the morning. And that will go, roll into our regular operating hours, and our, typically, our restaurants will probably close around 8 or 9 o'clock in the evenings.
Okay. And where in the plaza?
So, if you're, if this is, and our, is to our, yep, so it's going to be that building right there, where the yellow arrow is pointed at, we.
Okay.
Is it like by where the Pizza Hut area is?
It's right, yeah, it's on the same side. Easy on the fire is, I, identify is, we have a huge clock on a pointy roof. That's our, that's our location.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, what was the questions, what was the second question?
I forgot. Parking, I mean, look at all the parking.
Oh, correct.
You know why? Because I'm thinking of donuts.
Well, we actually.
I know what you have.
Regarding the music and lighting, there is nothing, you know, there's no extreme lighting. We'll, we'll have a floating halo sign with double lit for our logo, and then we'll do very modern, tasteful lighting inside, and there's no more, there's no spotlights on the outside. In terms of music, it's, we don't plan on hosting any parties or special events, so it's, here's your typical restaurant background music.
Okay.
Well, for sure.
Sorry. Alcohol?
No alcohol, nope.
And to verify the music question, I think it meant, would there be music outside?
Um, no, sir. There would be no music outside, nope.
Yeah, and see, any seating outside? Do you have plans for that?
We do. We do. We were told that we have enough space to have a couple tables outside, and that what we majorly think people just want to, you know, especially in the summertime, to have a couple seats.
Okay. So, you know, why don't you, because this is a fairly new product, I think, to the area, anyway.
Right, correct.
Why don't you describe it for everybody?
Sure. So we are, so our specialty, our specialty product right now is called a mochi donut. So it's a kind of an Asian twist, you know, of our typical, you know, beloved American donut. However, the major difference is the ingredient itself. We actually use a mochi flour that's imported from Hawaii, which makes the product more chewy and doughy. The term that we like to use for the Asian culture is that, as a QQ feel, so it's more bouncy when you bite into it. With that flour, it also comes a little bit less sweeter than our typical American donut. So in a way, not that, you know, in a health conscious and in a different taste of perspective, it is something very neat and different. That's just one of our main products. We are also a specialty Korean dessert shop, meaning that we offer other Asian desserts as well, such as cream, soft cream bread, and red bean ice cream, and bubble tea, and.
All right, stop, stop. You had me at cream bread.
Is this the first in the Rochester area, or do you have other locations?
Our store alone, this is going to be our first, our first store in Rochester, as well as in New York State, actually. So we are a brand actually based off of, out of, right outside DC. All of us are actually from local, we were born and raised here, and we wanted to bring this brand into New York State, and being a native to Rochester, and we wanted to have our first shop and our kind of flagship store here in the Penfield and almost area.
Great.
So this isn't a franchise, this is, you guys?
It is, it is. So we've been, the brand has been operating in three years, and in that short time, we were, there's seven stores already, and we are, our group are in charge of bringing it into New York State, along with a few other states as well. But it is a franchise opportunity, and it's a franchise style model.
Great. Any other questions from the board?
How many employees will be there?
So typically, it's, we would see that it will be anywhere ranges from three to four employees max. It's very, the training itself and the operation is very simple, so it's very plug and play system, so we don't see more than four employees at a time. And we are aware that it's a maximum capacity of 49, you know, capacity at our location, and plus customers, and we won't, we don't see that having an issue at all.
Thank you.
I just want to see what's in the box.
So just, we, we were actually in, we drove back from Virginia yesterday, because there was more products that we wanted to check out. These goes, of course, everything is better fresh, but, you know, we kept it in a cooler, and we were, hopefully, unfortunately, we don't have a store here for you all guys to come check out, but, you know, at least, we got some here for you guys to check. And there's two different products in there. There's the mochi donuts, which you see is a donut ring style, and there's a croftle, which is a waffle-based dessert with toppings and top.
When are you thinking that you would open?
So we are definitely aiming for mid-August. Just with.
You can just leave the box right here.
So mid-August is our realistic timeline and our goal.
Yeah, those look lovely.
And that's seven days a week you'd be open?
That's correct, yes.
Oh, see, that's what makes it fun. Okay, cool, thank you.
We have, you know, we'll do a rotating, currently we have 36 flavors, and we have two chefs that are graduate from CIS, that, they're, I'm sorry, CIA, and then their job is just to keep coming up with different flavors and toppings for us.
Great. So you make everything there, then?
So, yep, the raw ingredients is, currently is in storage in Virginia, just because we're first here, our location, but the long-term plan is that we will have a storage facility and a facility to, you know, to improve on ingredient. But everything is already pre-measured and made, and there's obviously a certain type of shelf life, and, but majority is will be made in store, but the raw ingredient will be shipped to us.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions from the board?
Nope.
No? See any call-ins or electronic, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? You ought to walk those around for the. Okay, so we're going to proceed then with Seeker first. I'd make a motion to declare it a type two action.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits, I'd make a motion to approve the application for a conditional use permit for operation of a restaurant.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
We'll be seeing you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'll hold them in my custody.
Okay. Remember, we're going to look for the chain of custody on those donuts, all right?
Okay, well, that was fun.
Next.
Please.
Polly Sadler, 1690 Kennedy Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a garage that is larger than the residence, as required by Section 250-2.2 of the code at 1690 Kennedy Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Polly Sadler and is owned RA-2. SBL number 111.01-1-7.2. This is application number 23Z-0035.
All right, if we may have your name and address?
Hi, I'm Polly Sadler, 1690 Kennedy Road, Webster, New York, and I got a tough act to follow, because that's a lot of food they're talking about.
What did you bring?
I'm sorry, I got dinner waiting at home, so.
Well, Polly, you did submit a very thorough application, so I appreciate that. Looks like you're really just looking to add on to the existing garage that you have. You described in your application, one of the primary needs for that is really having more space for an RV storage and some other equipment. It does become a pretty large facility that you will have. What, why, why so big? Why, can you do a little bit smaller to kind of shrink up the amount of the variance needed?
I have a few more pieces of yard equipment, like a zero-turn mower, snowmobiles, which hope that we ever get some snow, and we're going to go out and enjoy them, and a trailer. And I have an RV that'll go into this structure, and I taught in Webster for 30 years, and have a very close friend that's got Alzheimer's and dementia, and intend to take her with me and do some traveling, so. But being around Mr. Wilbert's Fields, a lot of wind at my house, so like everything to be contained in this, in this structure.
And then, as far as kind of adding this to the existing building, what's the plan there? Is it going to be the same material, the same pitch, everything going to look and tie in, or is it?
I worked, Andy spent some time with me, and we talked about how to make it fit. So the pole barn that I have, it's like an L structure, and on the north side of that existing pole barn, there's a nice blacktop area, so that's where the structure will go next to that.
Okay, and it'll be attached, so it's not too separate?
Well, it'll, there'll be a walkway between them, because Andy talked about the square foot of my home. The barn can't be bigger than that, so we talked about having a walkway between the structures.
So it's a separate structure, then?
Yeah.
It's actually going to have to be, well. It's going to have to actually be part of the structure, so it will have to be attached to it, so we can consider it a single structure.
So it's a single structure that will all have one roof? Is that the definition of a single structure?
Typically, what we look for in considering something to be, instead of two structures, a single structure, is that you are able to access both through the interior. In other words, if you can go into one, the existing garage, while you're inside, make your way to the other one without having to go outside again, then we would consider that to be one structure.
So it's like a breezeway?
Okay, so it's, okay, there is two structures technically, but it's going to have a little tunnel between, okay.
Same material, same everything, will look? So from the road, it'll look like it's all kind of tied in, and you, the breezeway is kind of going to be hidden, right, in the?
Correct, between them, yeah. And it's a perfect flow, two neighbors down, a gentleman put up a very big structure next to his pool, and he puts his RV in there, and then back beside me. So as you look at that from the road, it'll be just a continuation of the barn there. And it all nicely, color-wise, everything will be in sync.
And the driveway already exists to kind of access? Have you talked to any of your neighbors?
Yes, I went around and, you know, just collected them, some signatures, and told them what I was going to do, and they gave me permission, and so.
Do we have copies of those? If not, you may want to give out.
I don't think we do.
Give those over here, yeah.
Sure. Thank you.
I don't have any really other questions.
Any other questions from the board? Remind folks at home, 3408771, if they want to call in, or Penfield.org to submit an electronic comment. Anyone, and there are neither here, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, let's proceed with the environmental first.
I would say that this is a type two seeker, type two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further.
Review? I will second that.
Review, whatever.
All right, seeker motion declaring it a type two, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits?
I would move to approve this based on, it is consistent with the area. It is still a very rural community. As you mentioned, some other pole barns that are, have been granted similar variances for their size. There is a need based on what you've described. It'll look very consistent with your existing building that's already there, and from the outside or from the road perspective, won't really look like much is different.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated by Laura, second by Andres. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
All right, thank you so much.
We had a lot of applications tonight in large acreage lots and sort of out there, so that's, kind of makes things a little easier for us.
I think they're using the same builder that, and the other.
Good luck.
Then they should probably.
All right, next application, please.
Outlet Rod and Gun Club Incorporated, 3202 Atlantic Ave, Rod, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a taller fence than permitted under Section 250-7.1-D4 of the code at 3214 Atlantic Avenue. The property is currently or formerly owned by Outlet Rod and Gun Club and is owned RA-2. SBL number 110.03-1-26.1. This is application number 23Z-0036.
All right, if we may have your names and addresses?
Good evening, I'm Dave Stare, this is Will Grover. We are directors of the Outlet Rod and Gun Club, a couple of 20. Our address is 3202. There is two properties, we're divided by a school district line, but they can't be joined, so 3214 is the property that we are seeking the variance for our fence.
Okay. So, understanding, kind of, you know, probably being preemptive to the development going on next door. You guys are going to, in a sense, you want to build a 25, 26-foot-tall screening, I guess I'll call it, because it's, you know, it's soft material with posts to run along a portion of the property to prevent light, help reduce noise, and other, you know, things like that. That's a good example of one, except for I think in the letter you said about half the height of that one, because those are eight-foot panels on that?
Correct.
Okay.
As noted on this side, that is the only picture I could find available. It's 40 feet high. Each bellow or curtain is eight feet. We're just looking to put two of them with an eight-to-10-foot open space underneath it, so it'll be maximum 24, 25 feet tall.
Sure. What's the material? What are those made of?
It's a nylon canvas.
Okay.
Treated for UV light for longevity.
So won't disintegrate and fall apart?
Correct.
Wave around in the woods and things like that, okay. And the location where you're placing it, it looks like you're a good 100 feet off the property line from where the development's happening, pretty much in the hardwoods there.
Correct. The reason we did this, I've been involved with the mixed-use rezoning of the property since the beginning. Ralph Titucci, God rest his soul, provided me some plans. We did an overlay. We understand where the apartments are going to exist, four stories. It is immediately opposite where we're looking to put this fence, because we're trying to shield, as you indicated, the lights, some sound barrier.
Right.
To help them.
Other alternatives, do you guys consider any other alternatives, large land berms or anything like that?
We'd have to take our woods down.
Okay, so I was going to say, so the downside of that is you'd have to clear out a large portion of the woods.
Correct.
So that wouldn't be advantageous to the neighbors, yourself, or really anybody in the area, then?
Correct.
Okay. So this fence, you really won't see this from the road. It'd be very difficult to see from really anywhere, because it's a good 100 feet back. And right now, you probably can't, I mean, you wouldn't be able to tell where it is right now, with the way the leaves are up right now.
Correct. We talked, we talked to the manufacturer and decided that the woods would be the best position for it, both for protection from the wind, visual from the apartments as well as us. It should be mostly screened by the trees. The trees are, you know, 35, 40 feet tall.
Yeah, so it'll be shorter than the tree height, so you wouldn't see it from, from the sides. In terms of the length, I think you said it was about 100, 150 feet, somewhere around there. Is that the minimum? Do you ever expect to need to go larger?
Right now, it's, it's based on where we stand to perform our sports, and that's what we feel we're going to need.
Okay.
We're looking to continue vegetating that property line. Andy, if you could go up to the northeast corner of 3214? Those woods have been removed, if you will, from the clearing, and we want to vegetate that property line to provide both a buffer visually, screen protectively.
Right.
For trespass, we are arranged, so.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions for that.
Is this type of fence common to be used for this purpose, for other gun clubs or other?
Correct.
This was specifically designed for what you're looking for?
That is how we found it.
Okay.
The nearest one I know of is in Ohio.
Have you, obviously with the mixed-use space that's going in there, have they, do they know that you're looking to do this? Have they had any comments about this screen?
Didn't speak to anybody, wouldn't know who to, Bob Morgan, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't know if they.
I've worked with Ralph throughout the years professionally. We've had a lot of conversations. I couldn't attend the planning board meeting in which approvals were granted last October, but it was even indicated by Ralph. We have a great buffer, we're good neighbors, we try to be good neighbors to the town, and they were doing nothing to protect us or separate from their development. So we felt it was a good opportunity for us to do that now.
Because they'll find out eventually.
Well, they're going to hear us, everybody else does.
That's right.
Any other questions from the board? I don't see any call-ins, I don't see any electronic comments. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No, okay, let's move to consideration then.
Okay, this is a type two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
Any further discussion on the seeker? All right, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits?
Okay, I am going to move to approve. I think this is a good preemptive idea on their part, in a sense, you know, they know the development's coming. You know, as the town has two gun clubs in their, you know, jurisdiction, they realize, you know, there's noise, things like that. I think this is going to help, you know, in a sense, try to help mitigate, you know, noise, light, sound, things like that between the neighbors, you know, going in there eventually. And since it's going to be shielded, you'll never see any of this from the street outside, in a sense, they could have built this in the middle of woods and know, would have probably known unless you flew over and saw it from the top, so. Anybody could have done that as well, but they were good, and they came to the town and said, this is what we want to do to help alleviate some of this. While it is self-created, I think pretty much most applications are. I don't think it'll change the character of the neighborhood, because no one will be able to see it or know it's there. I don't know if there's a benefit that could be found, any other way to do this besides what they're proposing, besides a giant hill of dirt, but I think that's a little over the top for that, so.
Second.
All right, a motion to approve for the reasons eloquently stated, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good night.
Good luck.
Good night. And I believe, last but not least.
Scott Spencer, 1176 Bay Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a shed that is larger than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code at 1176 Bay Road. Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Scott Spencer and is zoned RA-1-20, SBL number 093.07-2-15. This is application number 23Z-0038.
Okay. If you could give us your name and address?
Scott Spencer, 1176 Bay Road.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, you are looking to swap out one shed that's not in compliance. And you're going to put in a new shed that will be in compliance as far as a setback, but you're looking for 40 feet extra, correct?
It's only actually about 20... About 20 to 25 square feet more than is allowed.
Oh. I thought it was 40.
Roundning up, maybe.
It's a variance of 40 square feet. So, yeah. 200 square feet is the maximum allowed?
Right. And mine's going to be 220.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We had that was going to be 240.
Let me... My apologies. It's a 12-by-24 shed, but I found out it's an 11... Not 24. 12-by-20. It's actually only 11-by-20 footprint. They count the eves in the 12 by.
[laughing]
So, my square footage is actually only 220.
Okay.
But the town's going to count the roof line, I believe, coming out. So, whatever the maximum extent if you stare from the top.
No, we're not.[1542.62]